All right, so it is six o'clock, so I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the September 21st, 2021 Planning Commission meeting for the City of Placerville. If everyone could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. You could go ahead and call roll, Mr. Painter.
Member Friend?
Here.
Vice Chair Gottberg?
Here.
Member Keeney?
Here.
Chair Lepper?
Here.
Member List?
Here.
Okay, great. So next, we will move forward to our consent calendar where we will adopt tonight's agenda and approve the meetings from our prior, the minutes from our prior meeting, unless any commissioners or members of the public have changes or comments. I did notice that in the beginning of the minutes, it says Chair Lepper opened the meeting at six. It should say Vice Chair Gottberg.
We will correct that.
Who did a great job.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I wish to have consideration for reordering of the agenda.
Okay.
I would like to have Item Four considered in advance of Item Three. And my justification for that is that the approval of the landscape plan actually is pivotal to everything that we have before us this evening. It actually goes all the way back to the approval for the entire major design changes that the applicant requested. And so it's, if we don't approve the landscape plan, then it seems to me that affects everything else. So I would request that we hear Item Four in advance of Item Three.
Okay.
If the other commissioners are in agreement.
Fantastic. Any objection to reordering the agenda so that we address SPR 90-11 R2 first? And the conditional use permit second?
I just wanted to check with staff is, this is our normal order to do public hearings and then continued items, so that's why you had the site plan for the landscape plan put second. But there's no, no conflict, no problem with reordering these?
No, the commission has in their bylaws the ability to switch things around with the consent of the membership.
And I would only offer this because the two items are actually related. There's a nexus between, actually, all three items frankly, even though one of them is not before us. This evening technically, the original application is still before us because it requires approval of the landscape plan.
Okay, so hearing no objections to reordering the agenda, then I will entertain a motion to have the updated agenda and the updated minutes approved.
So moved?
Okay.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
I was just there to support you, sir.
In favor by voice vote, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so our minutes and agenda have been approved and we will move on to communications. Do we have any communications tonight?
Yes, there was a letter that was submitted after the packets had been delivered. A copy has been provided to you. That letter has also been made available to the applicant who's in the audience tonight. And that's the, the only communication written that we have today.
Okay, great. Everyone has a copy of the letter in their days. Okay, so next we'll move to items of interest to the public. This portion of the meeting is reserved for those wishing to the address the commission on matters not on tonight's agenda. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address the commission tonight on non-agendized items? Okay, seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public comment period and move forward to our public hearings, which in this case will be our continued items first. And so we'll be looking at the site plan review for 150 Placerville Drive, the QuickServe. It's a landscape plan.
Chair, Chair Lepper?
I'm sorry?
In that, it was the opinion of the commission to run through the, the agenda as it's listed in the bylaws. There are a couple of items that are not heard tonight, but technically, we need to state that there are none.
Okey doke.
Being the presentations, educational.
Presentations and educational workshop. So those are all items that we identify and then, then identify that there's nothing related to them.
Okay, so do we have any presentations or educational workshops?
No.
Okay, great. Thank you for clarification. Okay, so now we will move on to continued items. The site plan review for 150 Placerville Drive, the landscaping plan for QuickServe.
And I just had a quick item on that. This was previously heard prior to me being on the Planning Commission. So I did review both the medium minutes as well as the video of the previous meeting.
Fantastic. Thank you for doing so and for clarifying. Okay, Mr. Painter, do you have the report for the site plan review?
I do. This, this item, again, we're talking about Item Four, involves landscape plan for the 150 Placerville Drive, the QuickServe, Convenience Market, gas pumps, and car wash. And on December the first, the Planning Commission considered and conditionally approved the major change which involved the rebranding of the site from a shell station to a Quick Serve business. And that has subsequently, building permits have been issued and final. One caveat to that approval was the landscape plan. And the Planning Commission required the applicant to prepare a landscape plan for the site by a licensed landscape professional and bring it back to the commission for review and approval no later than 60 days from the commission's approval. Well, back in February, the applicant did and did submit a landscape plan for year review. The commission continued that request for 60 days as either, neither the applicant or representative attended the hearing. So in August of this year, staff met and received a full-size copy of the city-approved 1990-91 landscape plan for Site Plan Review 90-11. The applicant proposes to implement that city-approved landscape plan from 1990 at the locations, at the plant locations shown on the plan. This includes the reprint, the planting of sod and lawn where indicated on the landscape plan and replacing the existing street trees along Placerville Drive and Armory Drive and elsewhere as applicable that have been aggressively trimmed over the years. As I mentioned earlier, Mr. Kandahari is in the audience this evening. And that concludes my abbreviated staff report. So there are suggested motion and actions dating back a few, a few meetings. Those are still in play should you want to entertain them. Of course, you have the prerogative to make changes to those approvals, conditions, et cetera. So that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you very much. Do any commissioners have questions to staff on the report?
The first thing I'd like to offer is to come out, a comment. And I would like to commend my fellow members of the commission as well as staff for really holding the line on this and really insisting that the applicant come before us to answer questions and make a presentation. Because it's been, it's just, not just this applicant, but so many applicants do not appear and it's so difficult for us to make decisions on projects in, in their absence. And so I, it seemed to me that, that for the first time, really, we held the line and insisted the applicant come here. And I hope that this commission, as well as staff, continues this type of approach. Because we shouldn't be rushed or felt compelled to approve something. If we have questions and need the applicant's input and the applicant cares about the project, then they should be here. So that's just my comment. Then the question I have, because the two are kind of tightly linked. I'm referring now to the landscaping diagram, whichever, if I recall, correct me if I'm wrong. If I recall, the original landscape diagram we received, the graphics were just so poor, we, we couldn't read them frankly, just to be completely honest. It was like, we couldn't make hide and hair of them. They were difficult, they were, they were poor. So if we look at the landscape plan and, and we have the pumps, we're looking at the pump area and there's dash lines around the pump. So to the left and the bottom of, of the left and down from those pumps going to the proposed landscaping, that's the area that's proposed for the, the parking of the U-Haul. Is that correct?
Yeah, that would be down here.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure, because I'm looking at the, at the, the staff report and not against the staff report. Looking at the staff report and just trying to get a scale for how this is drawn here because the pumps really weren't illustrated so much in the, the request for the, for the trucks, right? So I just want to make sure.
That would be this graphic that's up here.
Yeah, okay. So I just want to make sure that we're, we're clear on that. All right. That, that's all I had. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, good. Any other commissioners have questions about the report? Yes.
I have a couple of questions for staff. Maintaining the landscape was condition of the original conditional use permit from 1990. And I just want to get clarification on how the city will be able to enforce this condition now. And what sanctions, if any, are there if the, the landscape is not maintained to our standards? And what I'm looking for is some assurance for us as well as the public that from, once this, the old 1990 plan is installed, that it will be maintained.
Well, back in 1990, and one of the reasons why back in December, the staff added Condition Eight, which is the recordation of the Landscape Maintenance Agreement. We did not have that for the better part of, what is it, 30 years? So with, with this major change back last year, that the commission mostly approved, with the exception of the landscape plan. The Landscape Maintenance Agreement will be the, the hook, the, the hammer, so to speak, that the city will have to make sure that the landscaping is maintained, watered, kept up as permitted by the Planning Commission or City Council on Appeal.
And if it is not, then what is the, the next step with that, under that LMA?
Then the process works as follows. The, usually the planner involved with that would contact our code compliance officer. And that person is currently Diane Palmer. In the future, there could be someone else. But we would inform them, we as staff from the Planning Division would inform them of this violation or lack of maintenance. And there would be a code enforcement case begun. We of course want to encourage compliance whenever possible. And Director Rebus, please add anything that, that I may have missed. But that, we usually provide them with a courtesy letter. Basically letting them know that, oh, by the way, you do have a Landscape Maintenance Agreement and we have a copy of it here at City Hall should you need to review it. And remind them that Condition X, Y, or Z said that you are obligated and required to maintain the, the plan as, as approved.
Commissioner Keeney, if I may ask?
And I could go further.
If I may ask, if I may ask a follow-up on that to staff with your permission? Because I know you have several other questions. So my question is, Andrew, first of all, are we allowed to condition the, the U-Haul truck permit on the development of the landscape? And then if the landscape is not maintained per the agreement, can we revoke the approval for the U-Haul? Can, can those be tied together? Because it seems to me they're all, they're all related to me.
The use, the use granted by a conditional use permit is really specified on the use. We have a Site Plan Review component which really handles the aesthetics, the environmental aspect of it, of this site and the development in general.
The problem I have though is that the original application, which was for the major design change? Okay, that's made and the landscape agreement is, is required for that, right? Approval of landscape is, is tied to that frankly, right? So they go ahead and do all that, and I'm not picking on this particular applicant, but this is really more generic frankly. So the applicant goes ahead and makes all these changes and enters into the landscape agreement, says they're gonna do this landscape plan. And then it doesn't, it kind of doesn't get done. Well, we're not gonna force them to undo all the changes that they just made, right? And all the major design changes. And then we wind up being stuck. And, and it seems to me that there's an opportunity here. Look, this is all good faith, right? So we're gonna approve, we approve, we technically approve the major design change. And, and, but we need the landscape, but we expect, it's, it's a matter of trust that you're gonna do that and you're gonna maintain it. You also want to do this other element, so these different things that you want to do on that particular site. I don't see why they can't all be tied together and aren't all related. That's just my position.
Yeah, I, I hadn't quite finished my, my.
My apologies for the record.
No worries, no, I, I like the feedback. The, where I was getting to is this. You wouldn't have a, a Site Plan Review if you didn't have a use in which it's associated with. So where I'm getting, where I'm going is this, is this. Yes, you can condition this request because ultimately, the landscaping is a component of that, the design of the site. And the site is for a particular use. In this case, it's a variety of uses, a car wash, a convenience store, gas pumps, and potentially something else, a display of rental equipment.
I deeply regret cutting you off before you could give me what I was looking for.
I just wanted to, so then after a code enforcement, if, this, it's a worst-case scenario, which is, you know, kind of where we are right now. We've, have a, a landscape that's actually not according to the, the original plan there. We know that there are substitutions. We can see from the pictures, if anyone's done a site visit, as I have. There have been lots of substitutions of plants that aren't on the legend from 1990. So where was I going with that? So if we get to this point again, then, so there's code enforcement. Then would the city go in and replant and put a lien on the property? What, you know, what is the, what's the sanction?
Yeah, the, the city has a couple of tools to complete the code enforcement process. The, after, if we get no feedback or no response on the courtesy letter, the second letter that goes out will specify that you have X number of days to either challenge our enforcement, do the work. And if they fail to do that, then the next step is where we actually fine them per day until the, until it's mitigated. If we fail to get a response to that, then yes, we have the ability to come back before you to revoke the use permit, revoke the Site Plan Review and/or, yeah, it could go to liens if, if the fines get such that, that we want to recoup our, our costs. You would care to add anything?
That is, and, and so revoking the, the use permit completely is?
That is a possibility.
Yeah, like, as I said, worst-case scenario. I don't anticipate it going there. But it's, I'm looking for clarification on how this process might play out.
Yeah, I want to add on, to the process a little bit. So if code enforcement is, has written notices to the property owner and we start levying fines due to non-response, basically, the new toolbox that we would have would be coming back to this commission to revoke the permit for non-compliance with the conditions of approval on the conditional use permit. So I think tying it to the CUP is very appropriate because it gives you another enforcement tool. But just say we didn't have that, if it was just a Site Plan Review, we wouldn't have that ability to revoke a Site Plan Review. So because of the maintenance agreement, the city has the ability to hire a contractor to do the work and bring landscaping up to conformity with the approved plan and then we lien the property.
Well, thank you. That, that gives me some assurance and I hope other people who have commented on the, the project as well as other members of the public gives us some assurance that this landscape maintenance agreement actually has the, the enforcement and the repercussions that, so that we can have some assurance.
And I actually have a follow-up to that, to what Pierre said. In a situation where the city would, would bring in someone to do that work would be, I think, a situation where maybe the property went into default and there, there really is no owner until the property's sold at the courthouse steps or something. And that could take some time. The plants are dying, whatever, you know what I mean? And so that would be a mechanism where we could go in there, actually turn the taps, get the sprinters going again, you know, do the trimming as needed, so anyway.
Okay. And I have one other question about the landscape agreement. Does the water efficiency or water efficient landscape ordinance that was approved in 2015, does that apply to this project?
Uh, I think technically, no. Yeah, I heard, I heard the small, yeah.
I think it, I think it falls below the acre, or the amount of square feet or whatever.
Yeah.
I vaguely recall the onerous legislation, but I think this is too small to fall into that.
If it doesn't fall under the category that Member Friend is referring to, it may be exempt because this is not a comprehensive change, unless it's changed by you all, which would then, I think, allow the city to, to do that. But I think that, I don't, I don't really know how to answer that question unless we do a little bit more research.
Yeah, it's a little difficult because we don't have the actual square footage and I didn't feel up to trying to guestimate.
Memory seems to, to me, I mean, I could, we have the code here, so we can look that up if you'd like.
But, well, thank you.
2,500 square feet seems like.
And I was wondering if it's just the, the date, the CUP was issued 1990, the Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance is 2015.
Correct.
So I didn't know if it could be applied here.
Be happy that they have, to have a condition that staff will have to go back and look and see if the ordinance applies. And if so, can work with the applicant to make sure they comply with the ordinance. That way, we don't have to fiddle with it here. Because we don't have the data frankly.
Right. Actually, given the plant selection, many of them are drought tolerant and, but there are other requirements in that ordinance as well as, as far as the type of irrigation and, and water use. Since we're tying both together, I just have a couple of other questions. Again, I'm just trying to get a sense of this 1990 CUP and where we are today. We've classified this as an amendment. What level of change would characterize, would be characterized as a, a revision to a conditional use permit as opposed to an amendment? And then what would be, yeah, what would trigger the need for a new, completely new CUP?
Well, to perhaps correct the record, staff's review, which you have the staff report with you as part of the packet, the staff has observed the non, the non, the non-maintenance that's going on, on the site. So we brought that to your attention because it was a major change request to re-image, rebrand the site. Staff wanted the ability to come back, to come before you to not only make sure that at least, at a minimum, that the plan that was approved be adhered to, but also, I'll be honest, we wanted that Landscape Maintenance Agreement condition. This was that opportunity for staff to impose that. The, working with the applicant, I, I know they, they have an, at least at the time, back in December, I think they perhaps wanted to swap out a tree or two, but I, I don't believe that's their intent now. I think they're, they're willing to, to go with what has been approved. So is the landscaping planned before you be a change? Not to the, not to the extent that anyone is really requesting the change. We just daylighted that it was not maintained. And we wanted the commission to weigh in on that component. And also, you did approve the condition requiring the Landscape Maintenance Agreement. It's a long-winded answer, I'm sorry, but hopefully that.
It's a, it's a difficult, yeah, difficult question. Thank you.
Sure.
Good, okay. Do any other commissioners have questions for staff about the report around the landscape agreement? Okay, seeing no more questions right now to staff, we will give the applicant a moment to give a presentation. So if you'd like to approach the podium and speak to the project?
Hello?
Hi.
My name is Nameth Kandahari. I'm the owner of the QuickServe gas station. So this is my first time in a hearing, so I might get nervous.
We don't bite.
The landscaping wasn't maintained, we're the new ownership, so we have nothing to do with that actually. And we wanted to make a new landscaping, but because it has to be approved by the city, so we've been waiting and I hired a couple of people to draw a landscaping plan and none of them actually could finish it. So it's kind of hard to find people in my, every of these. And I've met Andrew a couple of times and, so I, first, the first time I didn't know I have to be here. So I missed the first hearing. And I asked Andrew, till next time, I'll, I'll make sure to be here. Actually, the guy who was gonna do my landscaping, asked him to show up tonight. He couldn't make it, so. And we have the old landscaping plan. I mean, I'm, we're here to do anything the city requires us to do. So basically, not, because we want our business to, you know, be in a good image for, it's gonna be very nice for our business. So we want to do whatever the city requires us. And we have the old landscaping. If you want, we can maintain the way it was and bring it up to court and replace all the trees and we have no problem to do that.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Sure.
All right, so do commissioners have any questions for the applicant this time?
I just want to thank you for appearing. I realize it can be imposing, or there's another word I'm looking for, but because I'm old, I can't remember these words anymore. Intimidating, that was the word. It can be intimidating. This is your project, you're proud of your project, appreciate what you brought forth. I, I like actually the selection of plants and what you're proposing to do. At the same time, I think you heard our discussion. I want to make sure that things get done with this. And, and it's not your fault. We've had this many times where we require a Landscape Maintenance Agreement and we have dirt and, or just brown, brown landscaping. So I think, at least for me, I'll just speak for myself, taking a far more aggressive approach to making sure these things get done. But the, the proposal here, I think, is very nice. Appreciate it, thank you.
We are a small business owner, so we want to maintain our image. The previous owner, they had like probably 200 stations. It was hard for them to maintain. But as a self-employed and small business, we're more in charge of making sure everything's run smooth than a big corporation.
Welcome to Placerville.
Thank you.
Thank you. So do any other commissioners have questions for the applicant?
I just wanted to make sure I understood you correctly that you and, actually, your landscape installer are, are willing to make some changes to the design that was first drawn up in 1990?
Actually, I grew one myself and I brought to Andrew's attention. We, we got prune trees on a, on the lower, by the Placerville Drive. And there were supposed to be three trees. One of his gone, so I don't know what happened. There's, there are two more left, but they're kind of died, I mean, old. So instead of prune trees, I was thinking to put something more green because prune trees, you know, with the fruit and everything, it becomes dirty. So I suggested to put like cypress. And Mr. Preher mentioned that they don't allow that. They want something with more shade. So, and if, I mean, any type of trees that you guys recommend, I will do, will put, doesn't matter for us. That was our suggestion.
The, actually, the, the plan that you submitted to us calls for pistachio trees there. You're talking about the area close to the proposed U-Haul?
Yes, yes.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's what the, the way I interpret the, the plan that you submitted more, more recently?
Yes.
Chair Lepper, I, I think, I think in this particular case, this might be one of those examples where plant, the plants have been swapped out over the years. And yes, as, as Director Rebus pointed out to me, that, that, that's, those are not the species that are on the 1990 plan, so.
Yes, I've, you mentioned last time.
But I'm confused. Based upon, I reviewed this based upon this document right here.
Yeah.
It looked to me like they're proposing Chinese pistachio.
Yes.
And those aren't fruit trees, so I, I would, I would approve Chinese pistachio. I think the elimination of fruit trees, of fruit-bearing trees, is messy and whatnot. That's appropriate. But I'm, I'm confused.
Yeah, if I may, Chinese pistachio is, is on the approved landscaping plan.
What is?
Chinese pistachio.
Yes, correct, so.
It's, it's the plum trees or the prune trees that are not.
I don't mean to interrupt your time, Madam. So I, I just, because I'm, I'm confused like you are. I just want to make sure that these three trees in the bottom area are Chinese pistachio as this document says they would be.
They're not, so.
Are they going to be?
Today, they're not.
Yeah, sure.
That's what you're, is this what you're proposing? So that's my confusion. Forget what's there.
Yeah, okay.
This is what you're proposing? Because this is what I'm gonna vote on. I'm expecting you to do this.
We'll do that.
Okay, forget what's, whatever's there. This is what I want.
Sure.
Okay.
And, and just to clarify, there are other plants existing in addition to? And just to clarify, there are other plants existing in addition to the flowering plums that aren't on the list before you, so that will have to be removed to make room for what's actually proposed. So I just want to make sure that all the commissioners understand that there will be, actually, quite a bit of change over there from what we have today.
And that's fine, because I don't believe in 1990, we had the plant list like we do today, right? So we have a new document to apply to that. And I just want to make sure the applicant's clear on this, that there could be major revisions in the landscaping from what you have right now at this moment, what's in the ground, based upon what you're offering tonight, because this is what I'm voting on.
Okay.
So you're good with that, right?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. All right, good.
Okay. Sorry, I'm just rereading. So the rest of them are, does anyone have any questions about the other kinds of plants that have been selected? Or they all seem acceptable?
I liked all of them.
Acceptable.
Thought they were all good.
Okay, good. Okay, so if we have no more questions for the applicant, you can go ahead and take a seat for now.
Thanks.
Then we will open this public hearing up to public comment, where we'll offer those in the audience a moment to come and make a comment for up to three minutes on this matter. Is there any members of the public wishing to address the commission? Okay. Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public comment for now, thank you, and return the matter to commissioners for discussion and action. I can start, as far as, you know, with my much more limited knowledge than some of my fellow commissioners on plants, I think it does look nice, and when we had talked about it before, again, we couldn't see really what was going on, but to me, my total, you know, eye, it seemed like it was nice, and that if it's held to as is, that it should really improve the look of the overall landscaping there.
And I also think a Chinese pistachio will do something to offset the visual of the truck parking, should we approve that? But I do appreciate the effort here. I want to restate that I appreciate the applicant's effort, and sorry it took so long to get to this point, but this is just kind of the process. I think we'll wind up with a better, far better product overall than if we had not done this.
Yeah. Any other commissioners have any comments?
Regarding the Chinese pistachio, my only concern about that, I think those are very popular trees, they give us some fall cover, they offer some shade. My only concern about them in that location, let's see, I don't have this folded right, but they can get to be a large, large tree at maturity, and I just want us to acknowledge, recognize, and the applicant too, that you may need to make some accommodations. Since you're planning on parking some large trucks over in that area, I don't know who's going to be parking those trucks, but you may have to put up some sort of curb stop to keep them from backing in and damaging the canopy of the tree. I mean, that's, that's part of the problem we have right now, is that they were aggressively pruned for whatever reason, but when trees get damaged, then they don't look good, it leads to, you know, you're, then you're not in compliance with our agreement, and you might have to replant. So it's just a heads up for you that perhaps, I said, curb stop so the trucks don't back into that, and it's certainly not going to be a problem for a few years. And properly pruning them so that you have enough space so that they provide shade, but aren't damaged by the trucks that are parked there, that really was my only concern about that particular section of the planting plan.
The customer parked the trucks, but even if they damage the tree, as long as we maintain it, we'll replace them, so we make sure the city is happy with it.
It may be something that you and your, and your landscape maintenance company may need to keep an eye on, so that you, so that it grows and is, you know, just the way we envision it tonight?
Yes. Well, we want the landscape to be nice and clean, not just because of the city, because we want our business to look good. So it's, you know, for our image, most important.
Okay, good. Thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion? Is there further discussion?
I'll move this item, Madam Chair, if there's no objection. I move we approve Site Plan Review 90-11-R2, the Quickserv, the consideration of the landscape plan, with the documents and staff report incorporated as part of public record. I don't recall, the final landscape treatment request as described in Roman numeral two is sufficient, and approve the plan as described in the site, in the site plan review documents, including the specific species planting guide.
Okay, thank you very much.
Please don't ask me to repeat that.
It sounded like you-
I think from staff's perspective, you're referring to the 1990, 1991 plan, landscape plan.
Well, I want to make clear that my motion is that we're approving this. That's my motion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So we have a motion and a second. Go ahead, and can you call roll, Mr. Painter?
Certainly. Member Friend.
Aye.
Vice Chair Gotbert.
Aye.
Member Keeney.
Aye.
Chair Lepa.
Aye.
Member List.
Aye.
Okay, so the-
Again, I just, again, I can't reemphasize too much, I just commend the commission for being willing to take a stand, and I hope we continue to do this with other projects that come before us. I said this sets a really good precedent, is a strong word, but I think it's important.
Agreed. And it's a very visible location, so I think it's going to look really nice.
Just want to add on to what Commissioner Friend said, I think this landscape maintenance agreement is a great tool, it's going to help us improve the look, especially in the commercial areas that they do get neglected. And I also appreciate the applicant coming and talking over, you know, his perspective, and good luck. I hope that your, you know, your maintenance company can get this installed in good order, and that everything grows well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we will go ahead, and so the site plan review number 90-11-R2 has been approved. A reminder, there is a 10-day calendar appeal period for planning commission decisions, and appeals can be made at the City Hall. Okay, so now we're going to move on to what was formerly item three is now item four, the conditional use permit 90-13-R at 150 Placerville Drive. Mr. Painter, do you have the report?
Yes, I do. This is a continued item, continued public hearing to consider the request to amend conditional use permit 90-13 to permit the outdoor display and rental of trucks, in this case, U-Haul, on the site of an existing convenience market with gas pumps and car wash. That action, or that item, first came before you on June the 15th, and the planning commission did continue the hearing for no more than 90 days to, and directed staff to provide the applicant with instructions that he attend the meeting and be here to answer questions. The requested use, for those that may not remember, is, as I mentioned, will involve rental vehicles, basically for the purpose of moving, moving items. And the requested use would operate as a pickup and drop-off location for U-Haul. The customer would use a phone app or computer app to reserve the truck. The applicant is not proposing trailers or other equipment that you might see at other U-Haul locations, so therefore, only the trucks would be displayed, and the applicant did provide a site plan showing the approximate location of where the trucks on the site would be parked. That's basically the northwest corner of the site, bounded on two sides by existing landscaping. Staff did raise concern back in that January 15th staff report, we were concerned that the truck inventory and the quantity that they were proposing, and its proximity to the pump island, could impact vehicle circulation, depending on the length of the vehicle that might exist there or be placed there for the next renter. So there is, there's some staff analysis about that in that staff report, and staff is suggesting that perhaps limiting the amount of trucks to get them away from that canopy, should it be an impact based on the length of the truck. They do have, they do rent trucks that are much smaller, and there would virtually be no impact at all, but some of the larger trucks that are potentially could be rented or dropped off and re-rented, we are, staff is somewhat concerned about circulation of other customers on the site to access the gas pumps, get out of the site, exit onto Placerville Drive. So staff believes that can be mitigated, as staff has suggested back in the June 15th staff report. The city did receive two public comments on this item, and one of the two is in the packet tonight, the second item is the one I misspoke. This is the item that has the public comment that came in after the packet delivery. The concerns raised by the, by the public commenters include traffic and congestion caused by this potential use on Placerville Drive, concerns about site aesthetics, and comments about that there are other similar rental facilities in and near Placerville. So back in the, in the June 15th staff report, provides a potential action that the commission could take, beginning on page five, including findings and conditions. However, the commission certainly has other potential options which they could modify the request, modify the findings and conditions, and then approve the request, or make findings and deny the request. Once again, the applicant is in the audience this evening, and that concludes my staff report.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Do any commissioners have questions to staff about the staff report?
I do have a question. Mr. Painter, since you referred to the comments that we got from the public about traffic impacts, can you speak to that? The application states, or your staff report talks about four trucks, doesn't seem like a lot of more traffic for that site. What is your, what are your thoughts on the traffic impact?
It would have no impact on traffic in, in terms of traffic volume on, on the street. It's hard to read what necessarily, because they're not here to defend their comment, but they could be, they could be describing the length of the vehicle and the maneuverability around, if that's an impact, but I believe they were referring to volume and congestion.
I think so, too.
I don't, there's no guarantee that, that four trucks are going to leave the site every day and four trucks are coming back. There could be times where he has no inventory there, so there could be no, no additional traffic other than what gets generated by the other uses on the site. The site and the immediate surroundings has, it's, it's one of our major commercial corridors, so it does have traffic volume. It's probably the most traveled road in the city, just because of the major tenants that are on that, on that site, Home Depot being on one end, of course, the movie theater is another generator of traffic. Rayleigh's receives lots of traffic. And the convenience factor that, that this property owner provides, yes, and the convenience aspect of it does generate traffic, but the additional, potentially four trucks, perhaps eight, eight trips per day, if they both came and went on the same day, that's miniscule in terms of the impact.
Thank you. I, that's, the way that I'm interpreting this, and I'm going to ask a follow-up question of the applicant too, but I think it's important since it came up in two of the comments that we've received, that we, you know, acknowledged that the public did comment, and that they hopefully have no concern, their, their concerns actually are, won't come, yeah, won't come to fruition. Thank you.
Okay, great. Any other commissioners have questions for staff?
I have one that might be more relevant to the applicant, but I'm envisioning if like they did have three or four of the longest trucks parked there indefinitely, if they weren't moving or anything, would that, would that be something that could be sort of monitored under the conditional use permit? Like, we only allow up to, and I'm not saying this is like in fact, but we could only allow up to the 20-foot trucks and not the 26-foot trucks to be parked there? Is that an option for us, or is it just all U-Hauls or not?
That would be an aspect of the use that you could, you could regulate.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff?
I did have one other question. Maybe I didn't read the applicant's submittal closely enough, but the staff report talks about four trucks or four units. The application itself talks about four parking spots being drawn, and I just wanted to be clear what we're talking about. Are we talking about no more than four, four units, four trucks on site? And can we specify that in the conditions?
That's my understanding, but we could certainly clarify that with the applicant to make the record clear.
And one more thing, the red line that you put in, or staff put in figure three, where we, we feel there may be a conflict as far as circulation within the site, what is to actually prevent anything being parked there? Could we condition this use by having the applicant paint red lines, signage? Can you explain to me how we can prevent that conflict from arising if we impose this?
Yeah, I think either of those options would be something you could consider.
But it's not something that's, as far as you know, part of the application?
No, no, this was staff-derived, that exhibit.
Okay, thank you.
We're again, again, concerned about the circulation around the pump, but that, that issue would go away with a smaller vehicle.
One second, we're going to have you give a, your presentation actually is next. So, yeah, if anyone, do you guys have any other questions for staff? No? Okay, then you can go ahead and come to the podium, while I invite the applicant to come give a presentation.
I understand the concern about circulation, but we are gas station first. U-Haul is a side business, so we never want to interfere with our business. So if that U-Haul become a problem, I'd rather not have U-Haul. So we're not, we're selling gasoline, so U-Haul aside. We never let that happen to, you know, you know, damage our business. So we take care of that for sure. If it's a problem, we're not going to have big trucks over there.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything else that you'd like to present about this topic?
Frankie, representing U-Haul, he's the air cons manager, so he's with me tonight because he has more experience in this business, and if you have any question, probably he can answer whether or not I guess.
I just want to say, your previous statement, that previous, it resonates heavily with me.
Yes.
That's, that's, I mean, that's perfect, that shows me commitment to your business and your business model, and what's important to you. And my notes are, I think, all the concerns that we've been talking, people have been raising, I think will be market-driven, and you're, you're the market.
Yes.
You're not going to do anything that's going to, if you damage those trees, it goes back to your landscape agreement, which comes to the city. If you have trucks that interfere with circulation, then that's a problem, and you're not going to allow problems. And I think, I think that's really important, so I really appreciate that statement.
Sure.
That was very strong for me.
Yeah, Madam Chair, staff can make a comment. I think it's very important to keep in mind that when you consider these applications, that these permits run with the land. So don't, you know, I think we're hearing a lot of really good things from the applicant. He wants a nice aesthetically pleasing gas station for his customers, where previous owners of the gas station did not have that sentiment. And so that's why you do want to condition this, whatever conditions you want to apply, think of this as running with the land, and you can have other owners of the property operating a gas station, and the U-Haul that are different from what's before you.
Fair enough.
I had a couple of questions for the applicant. One is one that I had sort of mentioned before, so you might have heard it if you listened to the video, but I noticed that your sort of underground storage tank, where you infill that, is on the north side of the gas tanks that's closest to this, and so when you have a truck come in, one of the tanker trucks come in to fill it, it sort of blocks off that forward path out of that particular gas pumps, and what you'll see people do then is pull in straight and then back out, kind of into the same area where these trucks are proposed. And so I'm kind of wondering, in relation to that with the, the traffic plan, what your, what your sort of mitigation measures would be to prevent people from, you know, a U-Haul truck pulling in and out, backing into a truck pulling out of the gas station? I think it's a limited time that happens, just when you're kind of refilling the underground storage tanks, but I did notice that at your property before, if there's a different place the tanker truck can park, or, I don't know, I guess your ideas on how to sort of mitigate that? can park, or, I don't know, I guess your ideas on how to sort of mitigate that potential?
The delivery comes for fuel not every day, maybe every other day, and it takes 35 minutes to dump the whole truck. And they come in, they put cone around, so they're cautious for safety. Like I mentioned, if this U-Haul create a problem for my business, I'd rather not have it. So we're going to watch that closely. We don't want our customers, you know, affect our customers, watch the circulation. I mean, we're not making that much money from this rental truck. It's just addition for convenience for the people.
And then I think a sort of a similar question comes back to the length of truck, but on some of the larger truck sizes here, it seems like if that person was backing up, they would be backing up in front of the driveway that connects to the Railies parking lot. And so I'm wondering, again, sort of similarly, you know, if you have somebody pulling off of that from the Railies parking lot into your gas station to go get gas, and there's a truck backing up, they may not see with the plants there. I know there's a bunch of plants on the Railies side that are quite big, actually, when I was looking at the landscape plan. So there's like a little bit of a visibility issue there, where I could foresee somebody sort of trying to turn into your gas station out of that section and hitting a truck backing up. So I'm kind of wondering similarly how to sort of mitigate that issue, if that makes sense.
Yeah, but I don't know how to answer that. Well, if accident happen, accident happens, but I don't think that should be a major issue. When people back up, so they watch, so they're careful with big trucks, so usually I don't.
Staff actually has a couple of questions for the applicant, if I may. Would it help to know, for the commission's benefit, when does the delivery trucks, when do they arrive typically? Is it before, is it early in the morning? Is it?
The U-Haul trucks?
No, no, your fuel.
Fuel, usually they come early morning.
Early morning.
Or late afternoon. So we never had problem.
The second question relates to when a U-Haul truck arrives, a renter wants to drop it off. Do you envision a staff member at the station parking that vehicle for them? This gets to the point with, with having control over where the cars and how they
Are parked.
Are parked.
Yeah, that was one of my questions.
Do you envision, because I think you and I've had the conversation where really they could just drop it off, drop off the keys in the box. But is it, would it be possible for an attendant at that, just to make sure the vehicle is parked accordingly, so we don't have impacts of? Now granted, I don't know what happens when they rent, and they have to back out to get out, so I don't know, maybe I'm making more of a confusion.
Actually, this is.
No, actually, we have access to the truck, and we repark them actually sometimes. If they park wrong, so we try to use it, you know, the space better. Remove them usually all the time, actually.
Okay, so that's an important, that's an important point, because there may not be a staff member to actually control or flag them in. And just for the record, it doesn't take a special license for these trucks, right? Anybody with a typical, is it a class, a Class C? Class C license, you can drive one of these trucks, okay? So we all know that there's a wide variety in parallel parking skills, parking skills in general, because we get that. So you won't necessarily have a staff person out there to control the parking, but if the parking is done wrong, and they, you'll go out and fix it.
Yes.
And you'll have people who are trained to do that.
Actually, I am at the site every day, so.
Well, okay. But you might take a vacation, I'm just saying. I mean, you give us some, you need to give us some confidence with regards to that. And I mean, I support basically what you're requesting to do, but there are a few little details here, I think, that are, that are kind of important, and my fellow commissioners, I think, are alluding to them. So, yeah, I'm not sure how we control that, because that's not something I don't think we can put into a requirement. But we can't control how people park the vehicles, per se, and if they hit something that's going to be on them, just like if you rent a U-Haul anyway, it doesn't matter. It's on you anyway, right? So.
If they don't park right, we just repark it again. And I have a manager in the morning, he's really good, and I pretty much train all my employees, and I'm there all the time, so.
That was, that actually one of my questions about the access that your staff has to the trucks once they've been landed, so that's helpful to clarify. What if more than four show up? Like, I'm not sure how U-Haul app works, but if you have someone just show up and park the U-Haul there?
I think it has to be scheduled, right?
Is it? Okay.
Does a drop-off have to be scheduled?
It's scheduled, yes.
Yeah.
So that's all controlled by you. They'll probably dictate where they might be able to drop it off.
They control that, right? Yeah.
Okay, got you. So it's not just like an open?
Yeah, no, but people don't come randomly.
Not like those little pedal bikes that they're dumped all over the sidewalks.
Right, like the scooters. Yeah, yeah, I understand. Okay, good. Other questions from commissioners, yes?
I had a couple of questions about the operational use. How many trucks do you think you will send in and out of the facility, maybe in a week or a month? I don't know if you've done that calculation, but you must have some idea of what the level of business might be.
He might know. What do you think?
Hi, my name's Frankie Vargas. I mean, at the most, we're talking four a day. By the concentric circles I was looking at, I mean, we have a huge amount of customers just within one mile of this area. But I don't foresee it's ever going to be more than four a day. I mean, we're not that type of a rental company where people are constantly coming in and saying, hey, I need a U-Haul every hour. So I mean, the main business is going to be happening on the weekends, so we're going to see Friday, Saturday, Sunday, when people are renting. For the most parts, these trucks will probably be sitting Monday through Thursday. Yeah.
And so there may be trucks that just remain on the premises for several days until someone needs one of a particular size?
I control the inventory a little bit more closely than leaving a truck sitting for seven days or several days in general. If a truck is sitting too long, then we move a customer to that location to have that truck moving, because that doesn't make us any money when a truck sits.
Sure.
It doesn't make him money.
Right. And so you're thinking busy on the weekends and maybe as many as four in and out over Friday, Saturday, Sunday, maybe a few more during the week, a little activity over that side of the business, the premises is one. I'm trying to get a sense of, you know, how it's going to change. With the restriction of parking, the redlining in the figure three, which we don't see on this, but I'm sure you've seen that.
Yeah.
That was in the staff report. How does that impact your operation? Is that, will you be able to keep the four vehicles that you anticipate, limiting, you know, that area to a smaller, a shorter truck?
Yeah. Previously, before we were cited, that's the maximum amount of vehicles we ever had on site there, four vehicles, and I felt it was still very comfortable. In the beginning, I was dealing with Brandon, and we already decided that a 26-foot truck just probably wasn't the smartest thing to put there. So we were sticking to 20-foot, 15-foot, and a 10-foot truck with plans to bring in something like a pickup truck to help out with the Home Depot situation we have over there, and, you know, maybe encouraging some more local rentals.
And you are anticipating just four trucks of different sizes, no more than that on the?
Yeah, we, we never discussed any more than four trucks at any point. That was already, you know, on our end.
In the application where it states four parking spaces, that is the area of your property that's going to be dedicated for this rental use? No, you aren't planning to park them anywhere else around, there's not a lot of extra space, actually, but?
That's going to affect the traffic. We don't want to do that.
Okay, thank you.
So just to clarify quickly, did you say that you guys aren't really intending on parking the 26-foot trucks there, or?
That was, that was already something that we deemed just wouldn't be feasible for the exact reason as you previously brought up. You know, we're worried about people backing up, the dealer's time, his employee's time, having to go out there and back up the equipment and repark it. And plus, there's other locations that have plenty of space where there isn't customer flow that's going to ever create an issue, so.
Right, okay, thank you. Commissioner List, did you have any questions?
No.
Good, touched on them. Okay, any further questions for the applicant from commissioners?
One thing, I would like to say thank you very much for the service that you provided to our firefighters. Number of times I went by there, and they were out almost to the street. And just wanted you to know that that was noticed and appreciated.
Thank you.
Absolutely concurs. Yeah, yeah. Okay, so I will go ahead, we'll close the applicant presentation and the questions from the commissioners, and I will go ahead and open public comment at this time. So if there's any members of the public wishing to address the commission on this topic, please approach the podium. Seeing none, I will go ahead and close public comment and return the matter to commissioners for discussion and action.
Well, I'll just go ahead and make the observation that the concerns and issues that have been raised with regards to the project, from my perspective, I think are all going to be market-determined. And by that, I mean, the business owner is not going to want to have an arrangement or have a side business that would in fact impact traffic flow for the gas station. Over time, people are going to start using that gas station. It would decrease business. It seems to me the city's only real concern is if it were to impact city streets, Placerville Drive and Fairgrounds Drive. If there's issues within, you know, being able to get gas, I don't really see that as our issue, assuming there's no pedestrian safety problem. But if people, it's not convenient for people to get in and out, it's like, well, I'm not going to go there anymore, I'm going to go someplace else. I see that as market-driven. The issue with the trees, similarly, the landscape agreement, which I think becomes very important with this, the damage to the trees, the maintenance of the trees, relates to that as well. So I think that concern is mitigated. And again, going back to the landscape, I think that's going to be a very compatible way to mitigate the appearance that was raised in one of the letters. And after reviewing the letters that were raised, I concur with staff that Placerville Drive is a major corridor. I can't make any finding in the proposed request here that rises to any kind of a level of traffic congestion, an increase in congestion or a problem. So after careful consideration of the letters that were submitted and reviewing them, I don't think the concerns really will materialize, and some of the concerns, I think, are already mitigated, as I described. I support the project. Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? Yes, please.
I agree with Commissioner Friend. I think we have before us a hard-working entrepreneur, businessman who's committed to that site and wants it to look good and continue to look good. But I also take to heart to what Mr. Rivas told us about this conditional use permit and the terms. This, the CUP runs with the land, and I think the condition that the property got into was, as we indicated, some, a property owner that wasn't concerned, quite different than what we're seeing here tonight. But we don't know what's going to happen in the future, and the property could change hands again. So we have the landscape maintenance agreement that has some force to it, to provide the aesthetic appeal. I also think that it would be pertinent to specify in the conditions of approval, just go ahead and put on paper some of the things that we've talked about. For example, figure three, we've, we have an agreement right now, it doesn't make sense for you to park a particularly large truck there, but I think we, I would like to add a condition, if the commissioners agree with me, that, that some sort of signage or striping that limits, that says specifically what's allowed in that spot, you know, no longer than 30 feet in length, for example. Just go ahead and put that as one of the conditions of approval. And also specify that this CUP only allows for four rental trucks there at a time. You know, there is a little, I won't say discrepancy, I think everyone is on the same page to debt tonight, but the application says four parking spaces and doesn't really talk to, doesn't speak to the volume of trucks on the property, whereas the staff report does say four trucks, and, you know, that's very clear. But I think it would be good to assure, you know, the other residents and ourselves that it is a limited use. Our applicant, you know, he emphasizes that selling gases, you know, what he sees the primary business of this facility, and that's the way I think the rest of us see it. This is just an extra use of the pavement. But I think that we, if we specify that, it will keep us from getting into a difficult situation down the road where we have some sort of conflict.
I just, I had a follow-up question for staff related to that. Is the staff recommendation to allow four trucks or three? Because it seems like you removed one of the four parking spaces in your recommendation.
Yes.
Okay, so four trucks in three spaces with one of the spaces being a tandem space is the recommendation?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was clear. I mean, I agree with, you know, Commissioner Kinney on maybe putting a couple additional conditions in here, which sound like are compliant with what the applicant wants to do anyway, but since it runs with the land, kind of putting us in a position that a different applicant or different owner doesn't come in in the future and choose to do something different here. So I mean, I think they said they don't really want to use 26-inch trucks, the next size down is 20, so I guess I kind of would like a condition in there that the maximum truck size would be the 20-foot truck that is listed. And then the same with limiting to four trucks at a time, so that more than four trucks would not be allowed on the site.
Okay, thank you.
My concern is that within a short distance, we have four other rental locations. And in the case of two of them that I'm aware of, or actually three of them that I'm aware of, they have a larger area to turn trucks around and do those kinds of things. I was involved years ago in an organization that had trucks, and they get parked everywhere. You can have all the lines you want, but they'll be, somebody will drop it off and it'll be parked. In this case, we have the three spaces out in front, we have three spaces facing the convenience store, we have three spaces to one side and a handicap to the other side. And dollars to donuts, somebody will pull in and pull into one of those, one of those other spaces. I just don't feel that this is a good fit for that part of Placerville Drive.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I kind of feel like I've landed in the middle of kind of agreeing that it's not, I don't think it's ideal visually there, and that with just three trucks and one just around the corner for picking up and several close by, that I don't know how necessary it is for our town, or how much it would really benefit like a majority of people in it. But I also understand that with the space and the landscaping, that it will be a little bit more hidden, if you will, a little.
For me, it'd be a different story if behind the convenience store, he had, he had places to park more vehicles, so he could have one or two out in front. And as people rented them, he would bring it up, up to front. Not having those spaces, limited to only three spots, I just think we're, I just, I can't see it working.
Yeah.
I'm troubled going down the road of interfering with the market and saying, well, we don't need so many convenience stores, or so many grocery stores, or so many hardware stores, or so many of this, or so many of that. That's, that's not our role. If, if an individual wants to go at risk and believes they can make a go of it, then that's their business, that really isn't our business. Our business is to make the determination that this is appropriate use of the land, will not have impacts which cannot be otherwise mitigated, and so on and so forth. And I, and I think the traffic is, I think the traffic issue is nonexistent. I don't think a finding for traffic can be made. I think the visual aspect, maybe initially won't be as mitigated as it will as the landscaping matures, I don't find it to be a major issue. With regards to how people park and this and that and the other, one mitigation offered by the applicant is they'll repark if necessary, okay? And, and then again, if it becomes a hassle and it loses.
becomes a hassle and it loses money on the gasoline side, then he'll abandon the business. So, you know, respectfully to Commissioner List, I don't, I think it's really difficult to say whether or not this is a fit on a major commercial quarter. It's not a scenic quarter, it's a major commercial quarter with Home Depots and the fairs and hardware stores and all rental stores and all sorts of things. So I, I'm not persuaded by that position. Again, I support the project. I'm reluctant with the conditions as being offered, but I think I could support them mainly because the applicant is not terribly bothered with them. And I am respectful of staff's comment about this approval running with the land. I absolutely understand that and agree. So that's kind of where I'm at. Thank you.
I agree with Commissioner Friend. There's duplication of services that comes up, and we've heard this complaint before for other projects, but as you pointed out, that's not our role. And so we'll let this play out, and if it's a success, perhaps if you want to expand your use, you'll come before us again and say that you're considering transforming the whole site into, you know, a U-Haul rental. You're not going to sell gas anymore because this makes more money, but that's, that's really what the market is all about. And perhaps in the future, there will be a market for the smaller trucks. I could see that the larger trucks are at these other sites that are nearby, and perhaps that will be how this plays out. But we can't predict that right now, and so we should just let, I think it's an appropriate use of the site.
Commissioner Gutberg offered 20-inch trucks, and I thought that was fairly novel.
I heard you say inches. You said inches instead of feet. Yeah, 20. Yeah, I would be, I would be inclined.
I did mean 20-foot trucks. I mean, you know, yeah, I mean, I do think this is, this is a consistent use with the commercial uses here. I mean, I do think one of the things we do have to consider though is the conditional use permits. In that section, one of the things it says is where such uses are deemed essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare. So it is in our jurisdiction to be making that determination if we're going to be granting a conditional use permit, that we feel like it is in essential or it's desirable to the convenience of public. Otherwise, we wouldn't be granting a conditional use permit, is my understanding of the reading of the code, so.
Yeah, if I could just assist maybe, and, and I understand all the various discussions, but it is appropriate for the commission to look at, especially in the case of a conditional use permit, it's conditional use, it's not a, not a by right. So since the site is already fully developed, you can certainly look at, are you overdeveloping the site? Is it still going to function properly? That is absolutely within your purview.
Okay, so where we're kind of at right now is three spots with four trucks, potentially with a limit of, at the 20-foot truck?
I'd like to see a motion.
Oh, I'll make a motion since I kind of started the conversation of adding some conditions.
Some parameters for consideration.
Then we can have further discussion.
Parameters for consideration. Restriction is such a harsh word.
Conditions, not restrictions. So I move that we approve the project. Let me move back here, make sure we get the proper language from the staff report. Hold on just a second. That we adopt the staff report as part of the public record and make the findings in support of CUP 90-13-R. As written on page five and six of the staff report, the project request involves negligible expansion to an existing convenience market. That's A, B, C, D, and number three, approve the conditional use 90-13-R, amending it and authorizing the outdoor display of the rental trucks. With the change of, in the conditions of approval, under number one, as written in Attachment One, Attachment B, as written by staff, with the addition of per Figure Three, the signage will be installed, limiting the length of a truck to less than 30 feet and parked in that specific red-lined area. And so make that 1A and 1B. A maximum of four rental trucks will be on-site at any time and will be parked in the designated rental truck party, parking area. And then the other conditions of approval, two, three, and, two, three, four, and five unchanged. So if you're all following the additions I made under 1A, and then 1B would be maximum of four rental trucks on-site at any time.
I just have a question on.
Point of order, we would need a second for discussion.
I'm sorry.
Can't have discussion on the motion to have a second.
I have a question on, trying to understand the motion.
I still think it requires a second to have that discussion.
I'll be happy to restate.
I'll second the motion for the point of having discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I was trying to understand what the 1A language was.
Per Figure Three in the staff report, that shows the red-lined area, signage will be installed, limiting the length of the truck to be parked in that area to less than 30 feet.
So you're saying parking could occur in the red-lined area versus the staff recommendation that no parking would occur in that area?
I'm sorry, did I misunderstand the red line? I thought.
The red line is where we are saying that they won't be allowed to park, so it would go down to those three spots to the left of the red line.
With one of them being a tandem, which, so you have two, one, and one, give you a total of four.
Okay, I, I was going on the language that was in Figure Three, and I'm trying to find where it's described in the staff report, but the language says, staff recommends of. In order to conflicts from rental vehicles that are 30 feet or more in overall length. So I read that to say a smaller, a shorter truck could be parked in that area, but you feel that this should be no parking?
Yes, my feeling is.
Even a pickup.
That there should be no parking in the red-marked area.
Okay.
I'm not sure, I guess, it was that staff's recommendation as well?
Correct.
So no parking at all in that area?
Correct, because that's the closest, in terms of radius, from the canopy.
Okay, that's my mistake. I misunderstood the caption, if you will, on Figure Three.
I apologize.
So let me, if I may amend my own motion.
You can go ahead, because I'm going to amend it too.
To, per Figure Three, signage will be installed prohibiting parking in that area.
I would ask that the maker of the motion favorably consider an amendment to introduce that findings of impacts to aesthetics or traffic cannot be made or otherwise mitigated. That's a finding.
That's back in.
I'm asking that we add that finding. Based upon our discussion, what's been presented to us, that we cannot, that we cannot make a finding there's going to be negative impacts to aesthetics or traffic. That would be a finding we would add based upon our discussion and presentation today.
And would that go?
It would go wherever staff puts findings. Usually have findings and conditions, so I'm asking us to be explicit on the findings.
Okay. So we have finding 2A. And so where would this go?
So the additional finding, in addition, the finding we would make in addition to what's listed in the staff report, is that impacts on aesthetics or traffic cannot be made, negative impacts on aesthetics or traffic cannot be made or are otherwise mitigated. And I can clarify that. So clearly, there can be, there's no establishment that there's going to be an impact, negative impact on traffic. And I think in the discussion from staff and from what's here, that finding can be made. And then with regards to the aesthetics, the landscape plan goes, I think, to a large measure to mitigate any impact on the aesthetics. And I think those findings are important. The reason I think those findings are important is because in one of the letters that were written, they clearly indicated they were going to appeal this decision regardless. And one of our responsibilities, I think, are to offer city council as much information as possible to support a decision that the city council would make. So I think that's an important finding.
Which comment was that, that you, you feel they will be?
It was on the letter that was in the report. I think the very last sentence was, please provide us information on how we might appeal this. So I presume there's already someone that might, might be considering an appeal, and if that's the case, and all decisions can be appealed, but I think in this case, they kind of raised the specter of that. So let's, let's take the extra step to provide information to council. And I, and I think it's, I think it's not beyond factual to say that we determine that there are no traffic impacts as a result of these four trucks being rented, and then the aesthetics, I think, are otherwise mitigated with the landscape plan.
Can I ask a question to staff related to that? Would that not be, traffic impacts not be covered under A, that it's categorically exempt from CEQA?
Yes.
That's true, but I don't think that precludes us from making a finding, and I think the information that was presented, including testimony from staff, that there, I think the word was miniscule, or something along those lines. And I think, again, assuming this might go to council, then I would want to give council as much information as possible.
Yeah, I appreciate that, but go ahead, Andrew.
Chair, if I can.
Absolutely.
What one could do is to embellish, maybe that's not the right word, improve the condition regarding the finding of, of exemption from CEQA by adding that, after reviewing, and four trucks would not generate traffic or cause congestion as a support of the finding that it's exempt from CEQA.
So I'd be happy to add that language to that section in CEQA to embellish that, or to strengthen it.
Under finding 2A?
Yeah, to strengthen, to strengthen 2A. That finding of negative impact on traffic based upon the application is presented cannot be made. That's what I would offer. I don't have the, I can't recall the CEQA element on, is there anything on aesthetics? Because if there is, and if not, we should just make the finding, because I think the aesthetics are mitigated, as we discussed, with the Chinese pistachio and the other things. And again, just going back to my approach of supporting council.
I think it's, that's good to support, again, as we've had many of our decisions appealed, and to give the city council, you know, the benefit to spell out exactly what we did deliberate on.
Will you accept that amendment?
So that would be under 2A that.
2A, and then if we need somewhere on aesthetics, I don't know if there's something in CEQA about the aesthetics.
We further find that.
Thank you. Further find is always helpful.
Negative impacts to traffic and aesthetics have been mitigated via a length maximum, which I'm not sure if we got that in there, and I don't know if we've decided on that one.
We don't currently have that in the current motion.
Okay, that was the question I had, and landscape plan would be. So further, whatever you restarted it, we find negative impacts to traffic and aesthetics have been mitigated via a length maximum, if we do that, and landscape plan.
No negative impacts to traffic or aesthetics, and?
They've been mitigated via the potential length maximum on the track, on the trucks that we're putting in that would potentially limit the circulation issues that we touched on.
And circulation, internal circulation.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if staff could comment on that. There is no CEQA requirement for aesthetics, so.
Yeah, I'm a little hesitant.
If you want, if you want to make a finding to aesthetics.
Yeah.
You can basically, what staff would recommend is that you make a finding that it's, this is substantial compliance with our design guidelines, which covers aesthetics. Beautiful language. That's what I, that's what I was trying to say.
Would that, again, I want to make sure we're in a strong position. Would we put that under 2A where we talk about CEQA? Are we making another finding separate from 2A on page five of the staff report?
We would probably want to add a item 2E.
2E, just make it a separate item?
Yeah, just make a separate item.
And I think, again, I think it's important because the writers of the letter kind of mentioned.
With our design guidelines.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
And I think your landscaping plan really does that, but everything else you've been saying makes sense.
Okay, so we have the amended conditions of approval and the amended findings. Okay.
So I do have a question about the length part. Are we going to add a condition, or is anyone interested in adding a condition that the maximum length of the truck in total would be 30 feet?
I mean, I would like to add a condition that the maximum length is 20 feet, not 30 feet, but I don't know if that will fly with my philosophy.
I thought we had 26 feet, I thought 26 feet was in there.
I'm disinclined to have the 26-foot, and even the 20-foot ones, I think, are pressing the, because I think when you add the amount that it goes, you're up to 30 feet on the 20-foot truck. So my inclination would be to cut it off at 20-foot trucks, which puts us at right about 30 feet total on the truck, whereas if you have a 26-foot one, it looks like you could be going up to about 36 feet. Does that make sense?
That's fine, I can live with that.
So, and they've already expressed that they're not really going to be parking the 26-footers there, and so for the sake of running with the land, I would be a lot more comfortable limiting them to 30 feet in total for the vehicle. So I think it would be a 30-foot length for the space, and it would be the 20-foot truck is my read on.
I think you need to say that it's a 20-foot truck.
Yeah.
Not a 30-foot.
Yeah. But it is 30 feet, though, in length, in reality.
Right, but it's not, it's not rented as a 30-foot truck.
Right.
It's rented as a 20-foot truck.
20-foot. Okay, so that would be under, then we'll add C, maximal length. Oh, wait, we could add it to be a maximum of four rentals, trucks will be on-site at any one time, designated in rental truck parking area. No truck shall exceed 20 feet in length? Is that what you want to say?
It would be a 20-foot truck.
No truck.
Trucks will be 20 feet maximum?
Yeah.
It's designated a 20, no truck over 20-foot container area, okay? You can't go by length. A Chevrolet is different than a Ford, okay? So you would have to say no bed length or no box length over 20 foot.
Maximum box length of 20 foot?
Of 20 feet.
Is that?
So maximum four trucks.
Does that satisfy your concern?
Yes, yeah, that would be a 20-foot truck, which is less than 30 feet typically in length, but because you rent by the box length, that's what we're getting at. A 20-foot truck is, yeah, can be 30 feet long.
Okay.
Maximum box length.
Oh yeah, I'm all down with that.
Okay. So, can we, can I restate what I understand the motion to be, just to make sure that I'm clear? Okay, so it would be to adopt the staff record. The 2A would be updated to include that we have considered and mitigated negative impacts to traffic and aesthetics?
I think the aesthetics was taken out.
Okay, to traffic via the landscape plan and the length maximum condition. And then adding to B would be, would be the maximum of four trucks on-site parked within three spots with a maximum box length of 20 feet on the trucks?
Leave, it was staff's recommendation that we not amend the finding 2A, but actually add.
E. Okay, thank you, perfect. So this is now.
The additional finding about.
The aesthetics.
Aesthetics and traffic.
Perfect.
Would be its own 2E.
Okay.
It was making a substantial finding of consistency with the design guideline, which we can include as, and aesthetics is mitigated.
Consistency with the design guidelines.
Okay, and no, no changes to Attachment B, the conditions on this one. We haven't made any changes on that.
That's where I put, I thought that would be under the conditions of approval.
Oh, okay, was that your max four trucks one?
Right.
Oh, okay, I just wrote it in the wrong place then.
So that would be on Attachment B, that's where I intended it. The signage. Oh, prohibiting parking, I'm sorry, that's right, prohibiting parking in that area, and then maximum four rental trucks and so on.
Okay.
So is that?
Yes, I just want to make sure I captured all of them that we had said and that they're clear for the staff when they are writing up the final outcome.
One more question for staff. Is, is implementation, presuming there'll be some approval of some kind, is implementation tied to establishing, installing the landscape, or is that a specific condition we need to make at this point? condition we need to make at this point? Going back to the whole issue of landscape.
Well, landscaping's tied, as we talked earlier, really with everything, because it's a component of the use as amended, as what I'm hearing. This is an amendment to the use permit to allow this additional use.
All right, so this approval, so if we, if we need additional amendment, I'm not sure, just for clarity, this approval is dependent upon or tied to the, fulfilling the landscape plan as submitted?
Is there a timeline that we?
Yeah.
These are two separate things.
I thought it's all related. I thought that was the whole idea.
I mean, they influence.
If we, so the landscape, landscape is the only leverage we have really at this point, right? They've already done the, remember, there's three items. There was the major sign review, change, and redesign, all that stuff. That's done. So, okay, so that's all finished, right? So then they also want to add this, which is great, and we like what they're doing, but we want that landscape in, right? We want the landscape. So I want the landscape in, okay, before they get approval to do this. I think those were all related. We established that earlier, that they must have approval of the landscape plan, okay? And it has to be, it has to be put in.
I understand the landscape plan review was triggered by the major sign change, not that the amended use did not trigger another site plan review of the landscape.
All three are related. It's all use of the same property, it's all developed on the same property.
It is, that's, you're right, they are coming together, they're coming before us all at the same time.
Right, so, so.
But I don't, I don't feel we can hinge the approval of the rental trucks with.
I think you can. We can. Let's just say for, let's just say, just for sake of discussion, hopefully for clarity, if this was a vacant lot and they came in and wanted to do a U-Haul rental facility and that was it, they would have to do landscaping. Staff would not grant a certificate of occupancy or not allow the use to begin until all the conditions were complied with and the landscaping was in, if that's helpful.
But we allowed, this, I was not comfortable with allowing the major sign change without the landscape, but we went ahead and allowed the signage to change without the landscape having been installed. But had it been installed, let's say over the spring, and then this rental use came before us, we wouldn't be talking about landscaping tonight. We'd just be talking about U-Haul trucks and.
That's true. If the landscaping was maintained, we would have this discussion.
Right, correct. Because they could continue. No problem, right, then we're already good, but we, we need to establish, needs to be established.
Right, so technically, the landscaping has approved in 1990 and subsequently re, more or less re-approved tonight. Yeah, that's still a component of almost, you know, Mr. Peabody, let's get in the Wayback Machine and go back to, back to 19, that dates me.
I appreciate the reference, Russell.
Yeah, so, anyway, Pierre, you have.
No, I would just state again, as I said earlier, you're intensifying the use of this site, and so I think you're perfectly within your purview to make that connection, as Commissioner Friend recommended, that the landscaping be in prior to expanding the use on this lot, and that's the U-Haul. Yeah, I'm not trying to be hard or difficult, but I really think we need to continue with what we, you know.
We need another condition of approval then, right?
Yeah, there's too many, just too many projects that have gone, you know, they, you know, nothing happened, so.
You could look at it this way, too. The 1990 approval has not been whole yet.
True.
Landscaping is that part of the pie that hasn't been completed yet.
We're not putting any additional burden on them. This is something they have to do anyway, so.
So is that covered under item, or number four, under, on attachment B? All conditions of approval shall be in addition to those established under CUP 90-13, so have we covered it?
There you go.
There you go. Yeah, actually.
Okay, you did it. Staff, staff's watching out for it.
Okay.
Okay, so the landscape installation, okay, because I agree, we need to have this all come together.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay, so that condition has been addressed.
So that condition's, we don't need another condition on this amended CUP.
Okay, great. Okay, so is everyone clear on the motion and the second, where we landed? Yes, just want to make sure. Okay, good.
Staff has a question. Who, who made the second? Thank you.
Yes.
For the second discussion.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. I think we're all clear on what that is, and so I will go ahead and ask Mr. Painter to call roll.
Okay, from my right to left, Member Keeney.
Aye.
Vice Chair Gottberg.
Aye.
Chair Lepper.
Aye.
Member List.
No.
Member Friend.
Absolutely.
Okay, so the CUP 90-13/R has been approved 4 to 1 with Commissioner List voting no, and a reminder that all planning commission decisions are appealable within the 10-day calendar period at City Hall. Okay, so thank you. We look forward to seeing your landscape and good luck with the U-Hauls, and thanks again for contributing to the community. Okay, great. So, Mr. Painter, do we have any new business to attend to? Okay, no new business to attend to. Next, matters from commissioners and staff. Do any commissioners have any matters to present to staff tonight?
Just one item for the record, Madam Chair, that Commissioner, Vice Chair Gottberg did an excellent job chairing our last meeting in your absence, and I think that should go noted in the record.
Fantastic. I agree. I watched, and I told her to get ready for next year. Okay, so staff, do you have any matters to present to the commissioners?
I do. I do have a few. I'll keep them brief. Just so you know, if you haven't been paying attention, the special meeting by city council last month, they did approve Resolution 9005, which is the adoption of the housing element. So right now, the housing element is in the hands of the wonderful people at HCD, where we hope to eagerly get a certification soon. So that's number one. Number two, Pierre and I are very excited that a former planning commissioner has stepped up and has, is going to volunteer his time to help implement for the city to prepare and create accessory dwelling unit or ADU prototypes, and that is architect Peter Wolf. Now, what, if Peter's listening and watching out there, which he probably isn't, but what Pierre and I were talking about earlier, which you find this interesting, there really is no mechanism that when these designs come forward in our housing element implementation, that they need to go anywhere other than staff approving them, because it's a ministerial building. But Pierre and I agree that I think we want to bring Peter back here and have him present them to you, not necessarily for your approval, but as an outreach potential for the city to, to let the public know that these, that these designs are available free of charge for use, hopefully to generate additional housing units in the city. So I don't have an ETA as to when those things are coming, but that works out. Do you want to add to that, Pierre?
Nothing to add.
Okay. Okay. The third item is, the week of Thanksgiving will be my last week working for the city of Placerville. I am going to retire.
Congratulations.
To do something and somewhere that could involve and will likely involve additional work, doing something, but.
Retire?
Retire, yes. So Commissioner Friend, you will actually serve longer than I've been working here this year.
Wow.
Well, hopefully that is positive news for you, sad for us, of course.
Yes, thank you.
Your absence will be keenly felt, Mr. Painter.
So anyone out there, the jobs out there right now, so the recruitment process, process has started, so any, any associate planners or somebody who wants to attain the city planner position, they're free to apply if they qualify.
All right, good to know.
Pierre, do you have anything to add for any items?
Do we have a meeting, next meeting?
It does not appear that we will. The second meeting in October is likely. We've got two projects that are, were submitted this week, and they are, they are at the complexity level where I can feel pretty confident we can get those in within 30 days to you. One of them is very similar to the project you approved for Marshall Hospital, where Tesla wanted to put a battery storage system. Well, in this case, the El Dorado Irrigation District, they want to do that at their campus on Mosquito Road. So there's that pro, program, or program, what did I say?
Project.
Project, thank you. It's been a long day and a long weekend for me, which I won't go into, but the, the second item is, what is the second item? Well, it, it's a major change to, I've already forgotten what it is, but it is a public hearing item.
Get the notice.
It came in today, that's why it's not coming to my immediate memory.
Mr. Rivas, clearly he's already in retirement mode.
Checked out, just done.
He's checked out. He's cleared his desk and his mind.
All right. Okay, great. Anything further from staff? Okay, good, nothing further. Then I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 8:42 of the Placerville Planning Commission, and I'll use, oh, I'm sorry, 7:42. Learning those minute and hour hands still. And I'll use the gavel, because Andrew gave it to me.